Good morning, everyone. This is Dr. Val Arkush, Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, and I am pleased to call to order the January 7th, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three Commissioners, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I have a number of opening comments today. As we begin today's meeting, I want to take a moment to recognize the events that took place last night at our nation's Capitol. I join with many others who have expressed outrage, dismay, and sadness at this insurrection and at this seditionist president who called for it. My heart goes out to those who were injured, lost their life, or were otherwise traumatized during this horrific event. I commend Congress for finding the strength to reconvene last night and complete the people's business by counting the Electoral College votes and ratifying President-elect Joe Biden and Vice President-elect Kamala Harris's victories. I also want to recognize for many of us, watching yesterday and this morning has been difficult. Nonetheless, we are here today to carry out the county's business. Please know that our Mobile Crisis Unit is available to anyone who is in need of help coping with this traumatic experience. Support is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They can be reached at 855-634-HOPE. That's 855-634-HOPE. This service is available to anyone in Montgomery County, including children, teens, adults, and families. As some of you may know, who are regular watchers of our Wednesday afternoon coronavirus press briefing, we did move that press briefing to today at 3:00 because of the events that were unfolding at 3:00 yesterday afternoon. But I will give a brief update this morning and invite anyone who's interested for more to join us this afternoon at 3:00 PM on Facebook where the briefing is livestreamed. Yesterday, we opened our first COVID-19 vaccination clinic to vaccinate people who live and work in Montgomery County. Right now, we have a very small supply of vaccine. Only people in the Pennsylvania Department of Health defined 1A category will be given appointments to get vaccinated at this clinic. Our best estimate is that the 1A group in Montgomery County is approximately 20,000 individuals. We ask that Montgomery County residents and workers visit our website to learn more about who qualifies under the 1A category. That website is macopa.org/covid-19. Once on the site, click on the green Vaccine Information button at the very top of the page for information about the 1A category and how to submit a pre-screen or survey to make a vaccine appointment. Appointment slots are limited and are available by reservation only. No walk-up registration is accepted. With our current supply of vaccine, we plan to vaccinate 800 people a day. As long as we have an adequate supply of vaccine, this clinic will operate five days a week, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. As more vaccine doses become available, more appointment slots and vaccination clinics will be opened. I know that many in our community, seniors over 75 in particular, are very eager to be vaccinated. We hope to begin to start with the 1B group by the end of the month, but this will depend upon how much vaccine we receive. We ask that everyone have patience as we start this initial rollout. Right now, the demand for vaccinations is much greater than our supply. Because of this, these early vaccination efforts are focusing on those at highest risk for contracting COVID-19, such as hospital workers, doctors, dentists, home health aides, and medical first responders. Finally, as exciting as it is to have a safe and effective vaccine against the coronavirus, we must not forget those already deeply impacted by this disease. Sadly, this day has come too late for the 1,043 Montgomery County residents that have lost their lives to this disease and the 35,315 individuals that we know have contracted COVID-19. We must lift up and support our students and teachers, our small business owners and restaurants, and the many service employees who have lost their jobs. The most important thing that we can all do to honor these individuals is to continue to follow the mitigation measures and get vaccinated when it's our turn. Now, many of you know it's been a priority since the beginning of the pandemic to prevent evictions and foreclosures. On this front, there's great news to share. First, the Federal Moratorium on Evictions and Foreclosures was extended until January 31st, 2021. Keeping people in their homes and preventing an influx of homelessness is critical to the health and safety of Montgomery County households and is also a major contributing factor in the recovery from the impacts of COVID-19. That is why, back in September, we created the Your Way Home Emergency Rent and Utility Coalition after the state's rent and utility relief program ended. This coalition provided households who experienced a COVID hardship up to $1,500 per month in assistance for rental and/or utility arrears dating back to March 1st, 2020, with a maximum of six months' worth of arrears or $9,000 able to be awarded. This helped keep renters safe and healthy in their homes during the pandemic. I want to thank our community partner agencies, Aklamo, Community Action Development Commission, or CADCOM, Manna on Main Street, and Pottstown Cluster of Religious Communities, who helped our renters complete the necessary paperwork to apply for the grants. I'm extremely pleased to announce that the Your Way Home Emergency Rent and Utility Coalition was able to disburse a total of $4.735 million to renters in need during the three months that the program ran. Thank you so much to our partners for your commitment to helping households impacted by COVID-19 and ensuring housing stabilization is maintained. We plan to continue these efforts with a new round of federal funding. The $900 billion stimulus package approved by Congress in December contains $25 billion for emergency rental and utility assistance nationally, and Your Way Home will continue to be on the forefront of providing this crucial assistance. The amount of funding that we will receive here in Montgomery County is still unknown. However, we hope to expand on the Emergency Rent and Utility Coalition's work to reach even more residents who need it most during these unprecedented times. Another program by Your Way Home helps to stabilize vulnerable families and individuals in Montgomery County who are facing eviction by providing them with financial assistance, free legal and social services, and support on the day of their eviction hearing. The Eviction Prevention and Intervention Coalition, or EPIC, program continues to see great success in its third year of operation. To combat the eviction crisis, EPIC expanded last fall from two to seven magisterial district courts, all with the highest eviction filings in the county. EPIC continues to see an 85% success rate in preventing evictions through legal, social services, and financial support, with nearly 200 households served in the program so far. The majority of people successfully served in the EPIC program are Black women head of households. I would like to thank District Judges Mark Alfarono from East Norton, Christopher Sersky in Jenkentown, Margaret Hunsaker and Gregory Scott in Norristown, Edward Crop and Scott Palladino in Pottstown, Edward Levine in Lansdale, for being a part of this much-needed program. Residents can visit yourwayhome.org to learn more about these services. And finally, Montgomery County Preparatory Noah Marlier has opened a landlord-tenant office specifically to assist those who are appealing a landlord-tenant matter. This landlord-tenant office, located across the street from the courthouse in Norristown, is open from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday, but filers that need financial assistance with their appeal should come before 1:00 PM. For more information, including additional resources, visit macopa.org/prothy, and that's P-R-O-T-H-Y, or you can call 610-278-3361. Continuing to support our residents in need is one of our top priorities, and that also means supporting our county employees. Today, during our Salary Board meeting, we will be voting to pay all Montgomery County employees a family-sustaining wage of at least $15 per hour. This will apply to all current and future employees, including part-time and full-time staff. We know many families continue to face challenges from low wages, depleted savings, and the increasing cost of basic household goods, in some cases exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Despite recent reports of overall improvement in employment and gains in median incomes, the economic recovery in Pennsylvania since the end of the Great Recession in 2010 has been uneven, according to research from The United Way. They report the total number of Pennsylvania households that cannot afford basic needs increased 14% between 2007 and 2017. That is why I am proud that Montgomery County is taking the lead to make sure our employees earn a living wage while working for the county. This effort began three years ago, but has taken on even greater importance during the pandemic because it recognizes the essential work that our employees have been tasked with during this pandemic. Our employees have taken on numerous responsibilities to serve residents in need during COVID-19. We need to also ensure we are taking care of our employees and their families. Raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour for all county employees allows us to do our part to make sure we are contributing to the health and well-being of our workforce and our community. And finally today, I would like to share some good news on the sustainability front. I'm excited to announce that we have the first project approved for commercial property-assessed clean energy financing. This is known as CPACE, I'll say it one more time, Commercial Property-Assessed Clean Energy, or CPACE, program. And this is the first project to be approved in Montgomery County that we're announcing today. When the Board of Commissioners passed the CPACE resolution last year, our goal was to help local commercial property owners obtain low-cost, long-term financing for energy efficiency, renewable energy, and water conservation projects. Concord Keystone Sora West LLC is borrowing close to $10 million from Green Works Lending LLC to fund energy improvements for the construction of a new 127-room mixed-used hotel and the rehabilitation of a historic fire station. This is the largest project funded so far through the Pennsylvania CPACE program, as well as the first project funded outside of Philadelphia County. Eligible improvements funded through CPACE for this project include high-efficiency lighting, HVAC system, high-efficiency elevators, and wall, roof, and attic insulation. Annually, these measures will save an estimated energy cost of nearly $27,000. We look forward to seeing future projects utilize CPACE funding to further their sustainability efforts. If you'd like to learn more about this program, you can go to pennsylvaniacpace.org. So, pennsylvania-c-p-a-c-e dot o-r-g. And with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Good morning, everyone. It was a very long day yesterday. It was a very long night. I was up until probably about 2:00 in the morning, watching the congressional proceedings. You know, what I want to say about yesterday is I am very proud of Congress for going back in to do the people's business, to do their constitutional duty of certifying the Electoral College results. And I just want to thank our local representatives, led by Madeline Dean, and just so many who went back in to do that. And there'll be a lot to say about this over the coming days and weeks, but I am also happy that the President has finally publicly said that he will commit to a peaceful transfer of power on January 20th, and President-elect Joe Biden will take the oath of office with Vice President-elect Kamala Harris. So I want to talk about our small business PPE kit distribution, which I've been talking about, but we want to make sure that we get these kits out to small businesses in Montgomery County. In October, we approved the purchase of 12,000 personal protective equipment kits, PPE, for distribution to small businesses throughout the county. And this initiative is a collaborative effort between the Montgomery County Commerce Department and the Office of Public Health in partnership with the Alliance of Montgomery County Chambers of Commerce, and we've been adding new partners steadily throughout. We have many other municipalities who are involved now as well. Upper Marion Township just picked up 1,000 kits to distribute to small businesses in the KOP Mall and other locations. Sheltonham Township, and Royersford, and North Wales Boroughs have made pickups as well. We're committed to helping as many businesses, families, and industries as possible during this COVID-19 pandemic, and one of the ways to do this is to make sure that they have the PPE so that they can continue to work safely and sustainably and remain open. So these kits include face masks, face shields, sanitizer, a thermometer, and other crucial COVID-19 mitigation and protective protection equipment, along with mask-up Monco window clings and documents that provide COVID-19 information and guidance, and CARES Act funding received by Montgomery County financed these kits. So far, we've been able to distribute 10,000 kits to small businesses, so we still have more to go. We know that PPE is vital for businesses, their employees, their customers, and visitors. Businesses with 100 or fewer employees are eligible at no cost for seven kits each, based on total employees and while supplies last. And I just do want to highlight the original members of the Alliance of the Montgomery County Chambers of Commerce. They are Eastern Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce, Hatfield Chamber of Commerce, Indian Valley Chamber of Commerce, Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce, the Norristown Chamber of Commerce, Perkyomen Valley Chamber of Commerce, Springfield Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber of Commerce for Greater Montgomery County, the Tri-County Area Chamber of Commerce. You can go to any of these partners, we have more as well, and if you're interested, you can go to www.moncopa.org/commerce and fill out the Commerce Department Assistance Request Form, and they will connect you with a distribution partner. And if any municipalities are interested in participating, please contact our Commerce Director, David Zellers, at dzellers@moncopa.org, and that's Z-E-L-L-E-R-S. We have about 24 hours to go to accept applications for the Monco Strong Restaurant Grant Program. They will, applications are open, and this will end on January 8th. And this program was created by the Board of Commissioners because we know the difficult situation our restaurants are in with mitigation efforts, particularly during December, where they missed the holiday season. So we have made $5 million in county economic development funds available to support restaurants and other food service businesses. These awards are not being given on a first-come, first-served basis, so if you have not applied yet, you still have time to apply. Please take your time on the application and give us all the information that's required there. And grants of up to $10,000 will be awarded to qualifying businesses. Eligible applicants must be a for-profit restaurant, food truck, deli, bakery, brewery, distillery, vineyard, caterer, or other food services for-profit entity with a physical location in Montgomery County. You have to have been in operation since at least January 1st, 2020, and have experienced disruption due to COVID-19, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and there's other criteria that is listed on the application site. Please note that applicants, entities that have been ordered closed for any public health violation by the Montgomery County Office of Public Health, including any issues related to the spread of COVID-19, or have willfully violated lawful COVID-19 mitigation orders issued by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania since January 1st, 2020, may not apply. Eligible grant expenses include rent or mortgage payments for a business location, payments for utilities for a business location, purchase of PPE, and payroll for non-owner employees and/or their family members between the dates of January 1st and March 5th. This program is jointly administered by the Montgomery County Commerce Department and the Redevelopment Authority of Montgomery County. And as of yesterday, we've received over 700 applications, so the word has gotten out, and we look forward to helping as many of our food services owners who really need it. Applicants with questions can submit them through the Commerce Department Assistance Request Form and get more information, including program guidelines and facts, at www.moncopa.org/commerce. And now I have an announcement about one of our great trails, the Penny Pack Trail. Construction of the Penny Pack Trail has commenced. Here are some highlights. The project involves construction of .7 miles of trail in Lower Moreland Township from Bribery Road to County Line Road, and construction of a protective canopy under the Norfolk Southern Railroad Bridge Overpass. Construction started January 4th, 2021, and is anticipated to be completed by April 2021. So this segment represents the last remaining portion of the Penny Pack Trail to be constructed in Montgomery County. Upon completion, the Penny Pack Trail will extend for 6.2 miles from Fox Chase Farm at the Philadelphia County Line Road to County Line Road in Upper Hampton Township in Bucks County. Trail design was completed by Gilmore and Associates and their subcontractor, Michael Baker International. Design costs were $140,000, paid from county capital and Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission grant funds, and Flyway Excavating of Mount Joy, PA is the contractor for trail and canopy construction. As part of a related effort, construction of the trail crossing at Bribery Road was completed in October 2020. And Penny Pack Trail is part of the Circuit Trails Network and will contribute towards the Circuit Coalition's goal of completing 500 miles of trail by 2025. And to date, approximately 350 miles of the Circuit Trail Network has been constructed. Bucks County is also working to construct a 2.5-mile segment of its Newtown rail, which will be an extension of the Monco's Penny Pack Trail, northward to Bristol Road in Upper Hampton Township in Bucks. The crossing of County Line Road to connect the two trails will not be completed until late 2021 due to permitting and procurement issues. And Bucks County is the lead on this project, and Montgomery County is providing funding towards the crossing improvement. And finally, I want to acknowledge our Health and Human Services employees for their 2020 Holiday Drive. HHS held the 2020 Holiday Drive for Individuals and Families in Need, which began in fall, with some parts continuing throughout the winter. The drive included donations to the coatroom, the Thanksgiving Mealbox Drive, toy and gift room donations, their sponsorship program, and gift card donations. And many restrictions and changes to their general practices had to be made for safe distribution for these items due to the COVID-19 pandemic, so they were very careful to use CDC guidelines, setting up appointments for drive-up pickups, making contentless deliveries when necessary, restricting the unmembered public from the donation room, placing the number, a limit on the number of sponsorships, and also creating an Amazon wishlist to enable donors to contribute without leaving their homes. So here's the list of items given out to the families and individuals and families as of December 31st, 2020, and the donations went to the Office of Children and Youth, Veteran Services, Community Integrated Employment, Early Intervention, the Early Learning Resource Center, Office of Senior Services, and Community Connections. 277 Thanksgiving Mealboxes were distributed, 204 sponsorships, which our gift cards were distributed, 1,024 toys and coats were distributed. They collected 19,860 in gift cards, almost $20,000, and nearly 1,000 individuals were the recipients of these gift cards, 943. So we want to thank HHS for all you do to help our communities all year long, but especially during this difficult holiday and winter season. And that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Gale, do you have comments this morning?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to provide a statement related to the events that took place yesterday. I have consistently been a voice for law and order and spoken out against protests that devolve into riots, violence, and destruction. For doing so, I have been smeared, censured, and physically targeted. Now politicians and the media are suddenly outraged after having spent the last year justifying, excusing, and often ignoring the unrest and lawlessness that destroyed nearly every major city in the nation. This double standard is purposeful and appalling, and I will be praying for our nation more than ever because God knows we need it. Thank you.
Commissioner Gale, I have to clarify one aspect of your statement. You are a racist, and you were censured by this Board of Commissioners because you used county letterhead to publish racist statements that left the employees of our county government and the 22% of your constituents who don't look like you uncertain about where this county commission stood on matters of race. So you can say what you want about the other issues, but I do want the public to understand clearly that it was your use of county letterhead to publish racist statements that led to your censure.
Commissioner Arkush, I would like to thank you for clarifying that it was, in fact, my letterhead, Joseph Gale County Commissioner Letterhead, not the official Board of Montgomery County Commissioners. It was my letterhead. So that's a desperate attempt to peg me as a racist, which people know I'm not. I spoke the truth, and I had the courage to speak the truth throughout the entire year, and many more elected officials should have stepped up and done the same.
To be clear, Commissioner Gale, it was your use of the county seal that prompted the censure. And with that, we will move on to general public comments. Ms. Cofrancisco, anyone for public comment on matters appearing on the agenda today? If we have anyone, then we'll have Mr. Stein read the rules for public comment.
Anyone who would like to make public comment today can use the razor-hand feature, and we'll give people a moment to do that if they want to indicate that they would like to make public comment.
And again, to be clear, this portion, it would be for items on today's agenda.
We do not have anyone raising their hand at this point.
Okay. Then do we have anyone who would like to make general public comment?
We do not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will move on to the approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the December 17th, 2020, 2020 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, a resolution, then we'll start with Mr. France on an authorization to enter into an MOU with the DVR PC.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today to present to you a memorandum of understanding, along with financial requests or authorization, for a collaboration between the Delaware Valley Regional for a collaboration between the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission and its nonprofit arm, the Southeastern Pennsylvania Corporation. And this is an update of the two thousand eleven Return on Environment Study that was prepared through a partnership between the Green Space Alliance and DVR PC and the county at that time. The original study looked at the economic value of open space and quantified many aspects of that value, really from a regional perspective, although it did break down the five counties within the Southeast Pennsylvania region. This effort will both update and expand that effort and be specific to Montgomery County. So we're very excited to embark on it and get the value back from it. The consultant, which will be E-Consult Solutions, they'll generate economic value numbers in four categories, including property values, ecosystem services, health and recreation benefits, and economic activity. And they'll create a full report and summary brochure and PowerPoint presentation to this end. We feel that, once completed, this report and study will allow the county to effectively continue with our critical messaging on the myriad values of open space, continue maintaining and building support for open space preservation, and bring in new open space proponents and allies. We're also excited, you know, from a planning standpoint, that this will tie in as we embark on the next update to the county's comprehensive plan, and these numbers in this study will go a long way towards emphasizing and making sure that open space is recognized and utilized toward advancing the goals of the county. It'll also look at the economic value of preserved farmland, which is something the county's been very active in since nineteen ninety, and in cooperation with the state, preserving almost ten thousand acres of farmland, and looking at the spin-off benefits of that beyond just the obvious appearance and value of having that preserved open land. And then finally, municipalities, I think, will really benefit from this as well. This will help give them data and information for local efforts at preservation, which is a key part in the grassroots level, is where a lot of these things happen, and we get support that helps us with the larger efforts at the county as well. So we're very excited for all of it. The actual report and the county's planning commission's involvement will be data support as well as an advisory committee that will oversee the effort over the course of twenty twenty one. And we will write the introduction to the report and provide for four short case studies within it, but the consultant will be preparing the remainder of it. The agreement is a financial contribution, and we're fortunate that DVR PC went out and obtained a grant from DCNR that covers fifty percent of the cost of this study. That was from the DCNR C two P two program. So the amount that we will contribute is nineteen thousand dollars, with the grant amount also being nineteen thousand for a total of thirty-eight thousand, going toward the study and supporting consultant and DVR PC staff support. And beyond that, I think that's the summation of my report, and we look forward to really working on the study in twenty twenty one.
Great. Thank you, Mr. France. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission Southeastern Corporation that outlines a project to determine the economic value of protected open space in Montgomery County and requires a contribution of nineteen thousand dollars from the county for the project. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? I'll just add that I'm really excited about this work. I think that preservation of open space is considered a very important part of the work that we do here by environmentalists and others. But there is a true economic benefit to our entire county from this work, and I think that really trying to quantify that and helping to make sure our entire community understands the importance of this will continue to boost these efforts in a way that's beneficial to everyone here in the county. So if there's no other comments, I will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. France. Mr. D'Orton, authorization to transfer funds to the RDA for the restaurant grant program. Is he on?
Mr. D'Orton was joining us by phone. It looks like we just lost him. We'll see if he can get back, but in the meantime, I don't know if you would like to move to...
All right, so the second and third resolutions are for Mr. D'Orton, but Mr. Stein, are you prepared to address number four? Authorization to renew the lease agreement with Suburban Management Company, and then we'll come back to Mr. D'Orton.
Absolutely, absolutely. So before you today is a resolution to approve a Sixth Amendment to a lease the county has with suburban management company for warehouse space in Oaks. The space is utilized by our Public Safety Department in connection with our now winding up Public Safety Radio Project. We will need this stored space at least for the remainder of this year as we begin to get rid of the equipment that we have replaced. We took down the equipment off a lot of the antennas, and we are now in the process of either scrapping or selling, donating the equipment that we no longer need. This is, there is an increase to six dollars and thirty-seven cents per square foot from the previous amount of six dollars and eighteen cents a square foot, taking it to a total of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents per year.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to enter into an amended lease agreement through December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, with Suburban Management Company Incorporated for approximately five thousand three hundred square feet of gross leasable space in Oaks, Upper Providence Township, at a rent of six dollars and thirty-seven cents per square foot. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, do we have Mr. D'Orton yet?
Yes, I'm on. Can you hear me okay?
Excellent. I can hear you now and see you. All right, so we will go back to item number two. RDA transfer.
Yes, so the resolution in front of you authorizes a five million dollar appropriation to fund the county restaurant grant program, to support restaurants and other food service businesses, as was outlined by Commissioner Lawrence earlier. The application process is underway, and the Department of Commerce has reported over seven hundred applications have already been received. As a reminder to the eligible businesses, the application deadline is tomorrow at noon, and staff is recommending approval of this program.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding and other related agreements with the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority to work with the Montgomery County Commerce Department to administer the Monco Strong twenty twenty-one Restaurant Grant Program. Be it further resolved that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to transfer up to five million dollars to the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority to fund the Monco Strong twenty twenty-one Restaurant Grant Program. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, Mr. D'Orton, authorization to fund isolation sites for the homeless due to COVID nineteen.
This resolution authorizes a four hundred thousand dollar appropriation to provide secure sheltering for the homeless and individuals in emergency shelters. The program will isolate and provide treatment of individuals testing positive for COVID nineteen. Emergency planning for this program is underway to safely provide these services. The county network partners access services and resources for human development are currently working with the county's housing department, specifically Kaylee Silver, to place impacted individuals in temporary sheltering sites. Staff is recommending approval of this program.
Okay, thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary agreements to fund isolation sites and provide associated services to individuals experiencing homelessness and or in emergency shelters that have contracted or directly exposed to, or are at high risk of contracting COVID nineteen. Be it further resolved that the county hereby authorizes the transfer of up to four hundred thousand dollars in Federal Cares Act dollars in order to fund the above referenced program and services. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. O'Malley, advertisements of an RFP.
Yes, an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for Drug and Alcohol Outpatient and Case Management Services. The successful responder will provide substance use disorder prevention, intervention, case management. Treatment and recovery support services to eligible Montgomery County residents. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated provider for the geographic area of North Central Montgomery County, Region Two only. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of an RFP as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment? Ms. O'Malley, just one quick clarification for the public. We're going back out, actually, with this RFP for just this one particular region within the county because we did not receive a qualified bidder the first time the RFP was announced. Is that correct?
That's correct. This was issued in October for various regions within the county, and this one particular region does need a vendor.
Okay, all right. Any other board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of contract, Ms. O'Malley.
Contract award, Health and Human Services Administrative Services, Hedwig House, Inc. of Lansdale, PA, five hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Contract provides for housing assistance administration services for Montgomery County residents with mental health challenges and who are experiencing multiple barriers to housing. RFP twenty sixty-two was viewed by sixteen providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the RFP. Contract is for a period of one year with four optional annual renewal terms. Contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Copier, Rico USA, Inc. of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, seventy-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and eleven cents. Contract provides for Rico black and white copier use at the county print shop. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract was for a period of five years. Contract renewal, District Attorney and Coroner Drug Testing and Forensic Toxicology Services, National Medical Services of Willow Grove, PA, one million one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Contract provides Drug Testing and Forensic Toxicology Services to the District Attorney and Coroner's offices. This is the first of three optional annual renewal terms for the twenty twenty-one term. Provider is the only firm that meets the requirements of the county. Contract renewal, Recorder of Deeds Software, CoFile Preservation, Inc. of Dallas, Texas, eighty-four thousand dollars. Contract provides for an annual maintenance fee for the Recorder of Deeds electronic recording system. This is the third of four optional annual renewals. Contract renewal, purchasing toner cartridges, academic supplier of Chula Vista, California, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Contract provides for toner cartridges produced by all county offices. Contract is competitively bid by Chester County on behalf of the Southeastern Pennsylvania County's Cooperative Purchasing Board. Contract is valid one one twenty twenty-one to twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-one with one optional annual renewal. Contract amendment, asset infrastructure engineering, chemical red architecture and site of Blue Bell, PA, twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Contract provides for architectural and engineering design services for the construction of the Mill Grove Visitor Center. Amendment provides for additional engineering services required for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit due to changes in project size and scope. Contract amendment, Health and Human Services Health Record System, Patagonia Health, Inc. of Cary, North Carolina, eleven thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Contract provides for an electronic health record system produced by the Office of Public Health and in collaboration with the Department of Public Safety. Amendment provides for correction to miscalculation of originally awarded subscription fees. Seven contract renewals for Health and Human Services, and the providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda.
All right, thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, award of contract for the OMP Reskin Project.
Contract award, Assets and Infrastructure Testing and Inspection Services, Applied Testing and Geosciences of Bridgeport, PA, sixty thousand dollars. Contract provides for ongoing construction material standards, requirements, tolerance testing, and inspection services for the Reskin Project. Award amount represents full cost of all testing and inspection services for overall duration of the project. Vendor chosen as per approved list of inspection consultants awarded from RFP eighteen oh one.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding award of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment?
Yes, I request a roll call vote, please.
All right, do you have any comment?
No.
All right, Ms. Washington?
Chair Arkush?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
Aye.
Commissioner Gale?
Opposed.
Motion carries. All right, Ms. O'Malley, emergency procurement, procurement awards of contract?
Yes. These contracts provide for the various goods and services required for response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Response equipment, public safety, medical video monitors, Phillips Healthcare of Cambridge, Massachusetts, forty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Contract provides for the Tempest ALS manual system for the county-owned ambulance. System provides for video laryngoscope feature, which makes it safer to intubate COVID nineteen patients. Response supplies, Commissioners, Safeware, Inc. of Lanham, Maryland, two hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Contract provides for PPE to be distributed to long-term care facilities in Montgomery County. PPE includes face shields, masks, gloves, gowns, sanitizer, and sanitizing wipes. Response Services Amendment, Information and Technology Solutions, SHI International Corporation of Somerset, New Jersey, seven thousand forty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Contract provides for Zendesk Call Center licenses for voter services. Amendment provides for talk telephony supplemental licensing. License is available for resource well cooperative contract.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
Contract award, Vehicle Upfit, ten eight Emergency Vehicle Service of New Holland, PA, twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents. Contract provides for specialty emergency vehicle upfitting for two vehicles for the city of Philadelphia. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract renewal, Software Maintenance, Pommer Technologies LLC of Headburn, Kentucky, twenty-six thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Contract provides the renewal support and maintenance for the computer-aided dispatch system servers and virtual secure duplication of data through the VMware software for Delaware County. Support and maintenance services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Renewal is for the period of twelve five twenty twenty through twelve five twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Are there any closing commissioner comments? Are there any closing commissioner comments? Okay, then I will announce that our next meeting will be January 21st, 2021. And I will move to adjourn the January 7th, 2021, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned, and we will convene Salary Board. See Ms. Pardue and Controller Sanchez. Good morning to both of you. Ms. Pardue?
Good morning. Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is an 11-page document dated Wednesday, January 6th, 2021, with a timestamp of 11:38 a.m. Of note, we have three retirees. James McGowan from the District Attorney's Office after 21 years. Deborah Griffin from Senior Services after 10 years. And Herbert Adams from Public Safety after 22 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve the January 7th, 2021 Salary Board presentation as given by the Director of Human Resources, Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Controller Sanchez. Any board comment?
I do have, I'm sorry. I do have one comment. I just wanted to, I know Commissioner Arkush, you had said in your opening statements about the increase to all Montgomery County employees to a minimum of $15 an hour. And I just wanted to say that I'm proud of the county, and I'm proud of everyone's efforts. And I'm proud to be a part of those efforts to raise the minimum wage in this county to $15 an hour. I think that should be the minimum wage at every employer across the Commonwealth, and I hope that us leading the way with this will lead to other counties and other employers across the Commonwealth doing the same. Thank you.
Commissioner Gale, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I oppose the county 2021 budget, and in doing so, I criticize the increase of spending levels within the county. Obviously, today's salary board is an example of a significant increase in spending, and I was not fully on board with the salary increases and hour adjustments for county employees. I think this, we're facing a period of time where we have to tighten our belts, and this salary board certainly does not reflect tightening our belts when we should be. And I also believe it's very clear that this is, there's also a political side to this. It appears to be a political stunt where we're using taxpayer dollars to push for a cause of having, ultimately having a higher minimum wage. So that's not something I can support, and I would like to have a roll call vote on this.
Any other board comments? All right, hearing none. Then Ms. Washington, we'll move to a vote, please.
Chair Arkush?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
Aye.
Commissioner Gale?
Opposed.
Controller Sanchez?
Aye.
All right. With that, the motion carries. Is there any public comment on Salary Board?
We do not have anyone with their hand raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cofrancisco. Then with that, I will move to adjourn the January 7th, 2021, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Controller Sanchez. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.